Good afternoon. Thank you all for coming and joining us here today. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge CPS Board and Staff Members, Community, Parents, Stakeholders, and everybody who has made the time to be here today. My name is Lilia Guevara. I am the parent of two diverse learners at CPS Evergreen Academy in the McKinley Park Community. I am Vice President of the Parent Advisory Council at my school, and I am also a member of the Parent Advisory Board at Kids First Chicago, representing about 200 parents across the city who wants the best education for their children. I have a few housekeeping notes before we get started today. First, please make sure your Zoom name is correct. If you go to the upper right-hand corner of the box with your picture, you will see three dots. Click those dots and click Rename to change your name. Second, this meeting will be offered in both English and Spanish. You must choose your preference by clicking on the Interpretation or Glove icon on the bottom of your screen and selecting a language channel. If you prefer Spanish, please also send a note in the chat that Spanish is your preferred language for breakout rooms. You can see the screenshot on this slide explaining how to select your preferred language channel. You must choose either English or Spanish. Third, we have a very large group here today. So we have created multiple ways to engage and participate today. Not everyone will get a chance to speak, but everyone will be listened to in addition to whole group discussions and breakout sessions. Please use the chat feature to share your thoughts in real time. The chat will be saved and used to generate our report on what was said during the Town Halls. Also, we encourage you to send a video, voice message, or comments to sqrp@cps.edu. Finally, we will use idea boards. Where attendees can pause their thoughts throughout the Town Hall and afterwards. You can see in the computer, you can click on the plus sign. What is the green? You know, it's a plus sign. You can click to add a comment. And also, you can click in the bottom part where it says like a zero and a plus to like somebody else's comment or agree with them. As you can see from the agenda today, it's going to be full of learning. This is a day where we will explore, listen, and learn from one another. This is a day for us to share our experiences and to share our hopes and dreams for our children, our students, our schools, and our communities. This is the day where we begin to repair harm as we work to rebuild together. It is now my pleasure to introduce the Chief Education Officer of Chicago Public Schools, Latania D. McDade, who will share some opening remarks. Chief McDade has been a CPS student, teacher, principal, network chief, and perhaps, the most importantly, a CPS parent. So please join me in welcoming Chief McDade.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for that warm introduction, Lilia, and for being here with us. And welcome to everyone. I'm excited to see so many people join us this afternoon. I want to thank Monica Haslip for being here. She'll be facilitating, and it will be an amazing time under her leadership. But thank you to all of our CPS parents. I saw all of the parents weighing in in the chat. Thank you to our educators, our LSC members, our CAC leaders, our faith leaders, and all of our other community partners who have taken the time to join us today, which means so much to us. We all have vested interests in ensuring that our students have what they need to thrive, especially in these difficult times. And like Lilia said, I grew up in the system having been a student and a graduate of CPS, but also a parent with two students who matriculated through our system. So I know how incredibly difficult it is, not just during this time, but as you're raising your children, and you want the absolute best for them. So that's something that we're all invested in. And so I'm incredibly thankful for not just your participation, but for each of you being engaged partners in education with us. So let's get right to the big question. Why are we here? We are here to talk about how we can support and improve our schools. And more importantly, we're here to hear from you directly about what accountability can and should look like in our district. This is the start of an exciting year-long process. So this is not just a one-and-done. This is time that we'll be spending together throughout the year. And we will work together to build a revised accountability system that can meet the needs of all stakeholders and help really move our district forward. I've spent the majority of my life as a part of the CPS family. And so what this means, whether it's from being a student to a teacher, a parent, a principal, and even a district leader, I've experienced the benefits as well as some of the shortcomings of school accountability. And I feel it's important that we be both transparent and honest about both, whether it's benefits or shortcomings. And we'll hear some of that in our time together today. SQRP is a good tool in many ways. It includes growth as a measure of school progress, and it holds district and charter schools to the same high accountability standards. The tool itself has been key to gauging just how well our schools serve students. And it has become a national example for measuring school accountability as so many districts have looked to CPS around our school accountability measure. But let's be honest, what has been done with tools like this has sometimes been harmful. Prior to SQRP, some struggling schools may have experienced negative consequences as the result of low-quality ratings. But the good news is, this is a huge departure from how our districts approaching this today, which is to provide the greatest level of support to those schools that need it the most. And this can be seen in a lot of different ways in the district through the expansion of our equity grants and in the continued investments that we're making in our district's opportunity schools. We also want to make sure that our accountability system provides a complete picture of school quality. Student assessments will continue to be a part of the accountability measure as they do provide us with a lot of useful information. But we also understand that measuring how our children are progressing needs to be based on more than the test alone. There must be multiple measures for determining school quality. Finally, I really want to take the time to acknowledge that the school consolidations of 2013 were informed, at least in part, by data gathered using school accountability tools. And while SQRP itself was not at play during that time, we know that it is associated with the harm that our communities felt back then. This has naturally created lingering distrust around the issue of school accountability. But I strongly believe that if we work together, we can move past this period in our history and create a system of accountability that we truly need. A system that fairly measures how students are progressing while at the same time lifting up our school communities. A system that is responsive to the diverse needs of not only our students, but also the families and educators who are so critical to their development. This system also needs to help us answer some really important questions. Questions like, are our students prepared for life after high school? Are they being set up for success as a lifelong learners? And are we being transparent enough with our families and stakeholders about the quality of our schools? True accountability also requires that we look beyond what is happening just inside the school building. From the classroom to the principal's office to the central office and our network office teams, educating Chicago's children is our collective responsibility. And our accountability system must measure how effective the district has been in supporting each school and the role that resourcing, funding, and teacher and principal stability have played in shaping school performance. If this is starting to sound like very complicated work, that's because it is. There's a lot of different moving pieces. But I want to be clear. Breaking this process down and making it understandable for our families and our communities is one of our most important goals, and that begins today. Because only when the process is transparent, clear, and totally accessible can we get the feedback that we need to make it better. And that's the objective of these conversations. You are the people that we are here to serve, which means that true success can only happen when we have your insight and your perspective. So the activities that we have planned as a part of this Town Hall will start to help open up those lines of communication. And it'll give you the opportunity to share ideas on what school accountability in CPS can and should look like, while we also start out in a period of healing and building collaboration and trust. So I want to thank you again for taking the time to work with us. And I hope that you find today's experience to be as informative and rewarding as I know that we all, I will, and our team will today. And I look forward to collaborating with each of you, working with you as we go on this journey towards having a strong accountability system within this district so that every CPS student, regardless where they live, regardless of their background, really has the opportunity to realize our vision of college, career, and civic life. Thank you so much. And I will now turn things over to Dr. Maurice Sweeney, who is our Chief Equity Officer.
Good morning, Chicago family. Good to see you all. Thank you, Chief McDade. Good to see Board Member Rome, Board Member Melendez on the call. And I'm really thankful and grateful to be in this space. And when I scanned through the faces and names, I'm like, this is the heavy hitter group. I know a lot of y'all. Colleagues and folks who've been showing up at community meetings, budget conversations, capital conversations. What's different about the SQRP work for us is that, to Chief McDade's point, this is a year-long journey. This is not a one-and-done. And so we're excited to be in this space with you to talk about how we want to advance equity and include stakeholder voices in the process. You can see the image right there. It shows the difference between equity versus equality, some of which Chief McDade pointed out around policy work and around resource work helps to inform this process. So as you think about SQRP, you'll think about it in relation to multiple things. And so that's why this is a journey for us. And we also heard from you that you wanted more time to talk. So I'm going to minimize what I say. I think Chief McDade gave us the right frame. What I want you to hold space for is look at the four spring pastel colors in that image. Think about the work of equity requiring work of mindsets, which is liberatory thinking. Inclusive partnerships, meaning who's at the table, who should be at the table, who needs to be given voice. Resource equity, how do we distribute resources to meet the needs? And fair policies and systems, how do we ensure that policies don't benefit some and burden others? And so we believe in the Equity Office and in Chicago Public Schools that if we want to do this work well, it's going to require all four dimensions interacting around the same thing. So we hope that through this process, you not only feel included, but that you also carry the voices and, you know, the people who can't show up today. And I hope that you represent them as well. Next slide. So with that, this year-long process is all about starting with listening, but moving us through the spectrum of inclusive partnerships, which is really centered on, how do we collaborate to come up what we need to come up with to ensure that we're supporting our schools with the SQRP? And finally, our metrics for success in these spaces, especially this one today, focuses on three things. We want to provide space for people to be heard. We are going to be active listeners in this process. We want to strengthen and build trust and community with everyone. And then finally, understand how stakeholders want to be informed throughout the engagement process, like what will make this process even stronger beyond this conversation. So with that, we believe, I think Chief McDade has already set us up for acknowledging and recognizing where we are. So now let's dig into the healing work. And I'm glad we have a great master healer from Chicago, Monica Haslip, who has done a phenomenal job with centering us to be great listeners. And so with that, I will pass it over to Monica.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Dr. Sweeney. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for being with us this afternoon. And just sort of give you a little background and context. First, introducing myself a little bit. I am the founder and executive director of Little Black Pearl here in Chicago, which is a place that's close to my heart. And also, you know, it's been my work, my life's work for the last 27 years, empowering children. So, you know, I've had a relationship, fortunately, with CPS over the last 20 years. And, you know, it has had its ups and its downs, you know. But I'm here, and that's what's important. And that's what's important, even in relationship to all of you. In addition to the work that I do here in Chicago, I've had the, you know, great honor of holding space and being a racial healing practitioner for communities around the country. And over the last 10 years, I've probably trained over 1,000 racial healing practitioners that are out in communities holding space for difficult conversations that have to happen. You know, some of the conversations I've had over the last few years has been in places like Flint, Michigan, around the water crisis. I am doing some work in the Carolinas, particularly in Charleston, you know, around areas where there are some deep issues around trust and also harm that has been done. So, you know, this conversation is no different. But what's beautiful about it is CPS has chosen to take a different direction and to find an opportunity to give voice to the community. And a great example of that is starting with me, you know, allowing someone from the community to hold space for you. So I want to say that, you know, the beginning of this work, you know, it's collective work around visioning, a visioning process that connects to the accountability redesign. But accountability connects also to community, you know, starting with the people, you know, understanding that we all are different. We come from different backgrounds. We have different perspectives, and we have different experiences. So we want to engage in a process that results in creating a new culture, you know, a culture of truth-telling and deep listening and thought partnership with CPS, you know. And we hope that this is maintained, you know, throughout and beyond this process. And, you know, it's a shift in the culture. And it's not just about the Town Halls or the focus groups. This process, of course, like the ones that, you know, like I just mentioned in other places, this process will lift up some of the challenges and issues and dynamics that often show us that bias and systemic racism still exist. And it still exists in institutions around the country, including CPS and others. And, you know, and it exists when we come together in environments like this, you know. And it happens even with people who have good intentions and good hearts, you know. And when harm is done, there's a need to acknowledge the harm. And what I really appreciate about Chief McDade is to open this conversation acknowledging the harm that has been done. And it gives us an opportunity to learn from the mistakes that have been made. And that's really what we hope to do and why these Town Halls will be used as a tool to encourage, you know, deep listening and truth-telling that will inform the work that has to be done ahead. And for us to be effective together, we really need to be explicit about owning this process and owning the work that's being done as a community. And owning that work is important, even though we're in partnership with CPS. And so a part of the importance of the methodology that I work with is eliminating the hierarchy of human value. And so since we already sort of started this process with a bit of hierarchy by, you know, just the way that it's structured, with CPS having the opportunity to introduce themselves, I'm introducing myself, and you haven't had a chance to introduce yourself. And because we have so many people on the call, of course, we can't go one by one. But what I want to do is start out by inviting you to join me in a collective introduction and also a moment for us to just get centered and prepared to be together. So I want you all to join me in an exercise called Rubbing Hands. And I'd like for you to get comfortable in your seats where you are. You know, put your feet flat on the floor. You know, relax. And I want you to put your hands together and start rubbing them together and start to generate heat and energy in your hands. And on the count of three, I'm going to ask you to take one hand and put on your heart. And the other hand, I want you to put on your stomach. All right. One, two, three. Heart and stomach. Now I want you to take five deep breaths in through your nose, out through your mouth. And so for those of you who are comfortable, close your eyes and just relax. Feel the air coming into your body. Feel your lungs filling up and expanding. Let the pressure of the day subside. Relax and let the gift of breath spread throughout your body. I want you to take another deep breath. Let's just breathe for a moment for our children and for our parents and teachers that are at home and those that have gone back to school. Let's take a breath for the change that they're experiencing. And let's take a breath for each other as we share this space and time together today. Let's just breathe and take in this breath. Let's take a breath for gratitude and appreciation. Deep breath for gratitude and appreciation. And now I want you to open your eyes. And on the count of three, I'd like for you, in honor of the past, I want you to think of a person, an ancestor, who you would like to invite their wisdom to inform us today as we do this work together. And on the count of three, I want you to open your mics and say their name. One, two, three. Beautiful. All right. And in honor of the present, your energy that you're bringing to this space today and for you to anchor this space with your energy. On the count of three, I want you to say your name. One, two, three. Thank you. And finally, in honor of the future, you know, just the beauty of these children that we are coming together to support, I want you to think of the name of a child whose energy you want to bring into this space today. And I want you to speak their name in honor of our future. On the count of three, one, two, three. Yes, thank you. So we have now anchored our space with the beautiful energy of our ancestors, of our own presence, and of our children. So now we're going to get to the real work. Every time I have a circle or really any time I'm getting ready to go into a deep conversation, I bring the touchstones with me. These touchstones are common agreements. They're ways in which I invite people to just anchor themselves and their thoughts and ways that they want to communicate with each other because we're going to be holding space and sharing sacred stories together today. So these, I'm just going to go through this list. The first one is be 100% present, extending and presuming welcome. Listen deeply. Listen to the words and the words beneath the words, you know, always by invitation. No fixing. Suspend judgment. Identify assumptions. Our assumptions are usually invisible, but they really do undergird our thinking and our worldview. We want you to speak your truth. Speak what's in your heart. Respect silence. Maintain confidentiality. Creating a safe space by respecting the confidential nature of the exchange and stories that you have when you go into your breakout rooms. And when things get difficult, turn to wonder. Sometimes people say things that we don't agree with or that we don't understand. And every now and then, it's okay to just, you know, say to yourself, I wonder what she could have been thinking. Or I wonder what my reaction is showing me. So those are touchstones that I'm inviting us to sort of anchor this conversation with. So we're going to move right into it. Over the last three Town Halls, people have made it really clear that they want to have more time to share and more time to share their stories. So we're going to get ready for our first breakout. And in this breakout group, we're going to send you out in triads. There'll be three of you in the breakout room together. Each one of you will get two minutes. And I want you to pay attention to what you're feeling, not just what you're thinking, but what you're feeling when you're listening to another person's story. What are you feeling when you're able to tell your own truth, to really speak truth in ways that you haven't been able to do it or you felt like you haven't been able to do it? So when you go into these groups, each one of you will take two minutes. You'll switch, you'll come back in six minutes. And we're going to open it up for a debrief where you get a chance to really share some of the highlights of what you shared with each other in your breakout group. So the question I want you to answer is share a story about a time in your educational experience when you wanted to be seen, heard, or understood, and you were. What did this experience allow you to do, become, or how did it help improve the life of a child or others? The question again is share a story about a time in your educational experience. It can be when you were young. It could be about being a parent or an administrator. It can be when you were young, it could be about being a parent or an administrator. But share a story about your educational experience when you wanted to be seen, heard, or understood? And you were. What did this experience allow you to do, become? Or how did it help you improve the life of a child or children or others? So we're going to send you out to your breakout group and we'll see you in about six minutes.
Thank you, everybody, for coming back. So we want to encourage everyone to use the chat feature, submit a video or a voice messages and use idea boards to actively engage. So if you want to raise your hand, uh, you can click on the participants at the bottom of your screen and you can find your name and click the blue hand and click the blue, um, and click again to lower your hand.
Great. So welcome back, everybody. Yes, I see hands up already. We haven't even gotten into it yet, but that's, that's exciting to see the hands up. I, uh, before we actually get into you sharing your stories, I want to just invite you to keep in mind, we want to stick around maybe a minute on your response so we can get as many voices in this equation as possible. Um, before we hop into that, I want to ask you a couple of quick questions. You know, what did it feel like to, to be the, the speaker, the person who got to share your truth for two minutes? Did you notice any difference in what you felt when you actually got a chance to just speak for two minutes and have two people listening to you? I see some heads shaking.
Nope.
Anybody want to share what it felt like to, to listen? I mean, to speak, to be able to tell your truth?
I'll share, Monica. You know, it felt really good. And especially because I'm thinking about like, remember the book, The Invisible Man? We know this story, right? That's what it feels like, you know, you, um, you're actually being seen just pretty much for who you are and not being judged. But actually being Ashley and someone responding to what you, it makes you feel like, you know, you, you are important. You do have some value.
Beautiful. Thank you for that. Um, anybody, anybody feedback on what it felt like to be the listener? The one holding the story?
Well, we have Cheryl Scalco and then Evan Carradine and Iris. So I don't, one of will share it first?
Yes.
Hi guys, how are you? This is, sorry, I'm at school today. This is Denise Paloco. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, now people listen to me because now I have gotten a $34 million building to extend to our school. So they weren't listening in the very beginning. And now that we've gotten this and we collaborated with our PAC and our PTO and our everybody and through the community, this is something that's good because now it's, they all call it my building. So it's really a good thing once things happen. So that's my story.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
We're, we're just going to open this up. Uh, I think.
We have water everywhere.
I see we've got Evan Carradine has his hand up.
Great. Evan, you're muted.
Okay, am I muted now?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, in terms of, did I feel any different? Um, it was nice to tell them, it's always nice to, you know, discuss and hear, you know, hit different people's perspectives on things. In terms that I feel any different than I normally do, no I didn't. But then like I was telling them, I've been, I've been doing this local school, all this, the education act with local school council thing since the 1990s. So a little bit of an old hat.
Well, it's good to have your energy in this place because you bring all the, the historical value and all the goodness that we need to anchor this conversation with. You know, that's truth. What we, what we've gone through, just to have, to have you be able to share that. Um, Hal, who's next?
Uh, we have Iris Smith.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. Um, I, um, enjoy listening to, uh, you know, other stories. Um, I feel like since I've been working with the LSC PAC for my local school, um, I feel like I'm a voice for the teachers and the staff in this school because they are not being heard. Um, I feel that, um, these meetings aren't good, but it, I think, um, you know, we need to listen more to the people who are here to speak and share current experiences and come up with, um, solutions. Um, as a group, I don't feel that, um, you know, that's really being heard in these, uh, gatherings. Um, the teachers and staffs at, at, the teachers and staff at current, at the current school that I'm on the PAC LSC. Um, they are afraid to speak on things that are serious because no one is there to answer their emails. No one is there to take action on the things that they, uh, are having issues with. So I'm hoping to get, uh, in this meeting that we can, uh, you know, come up with more solutions and action plans instead of, you know, the merry-go-round of, um, you know, how do you feel? We really need to listen to how the teachers are feeling at the foundation. Um, the principals, who's holding them accountable when they are the ones to put things in place and work with LSC um, to create change. There's a huge gap in communication. So we talk, but it's no action. You currently have data, data that comes from these schools and it's housed at the University of Chicago, but it's not being, um, utilized or monitored properly. It takes months for people to, uh, you know, look at those surveys and things like that. So a lot of things fall through the cracks in these teachers, students, um, other staff members are not being properly, um, heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Iris. So i- in the spirit of what Iris just mentioned, I, I'm gonna, you know, take action according to what she just expressed. I want us to keep moving. We just gonna keep moving. Let's go to the next question because the next question really gets at the heart of things and really give you the opportunity to, to speak specifically to some of the issues and some of the concerns you may have. And so we're going to spend more time this time in the, uh, breakout rooms for you to answer this question or these two questions. And then we're going to come back and just open it up and allow you to, uh, you know, give feedback and talk about things that resonate or connect with you or things that you just want to share and be heard with, uh, you know, by CPS on these issues. So the question I want you to answer this time is what is important for the district to know about your personal experience in CPS going into the accountability redesign process? What is important for the district to know about your personal experience in CPS going into the accountability redesign process? And secondly, how can the district rebuild and continue to grow trust? The second part of this question is important. How can the district rebuild and continue to grow trust? We're going to put these two questions in the chat. Uh, so when you go into your breakout rooms, if you need to be refreshed on the questions, they should be there. But at, answer these questions, honor one another by listening. Give each other time to speak your truth. And then we're going to come back and share a little bit about what you shared with each other in your breakout rooms. And we're going to take one minute each to highlight the things that you talked about. So we can get as many people, um, you know, their conversation in the equation as possible. So we'll see you back in about 10 minutes. Welcome back, everybody. We're going to hop right into it. Uh, so I'm going to ask Hal if he would help me out by uh, identifying the next person. What I'd like for you all to do, if you would, just, uh, share some highlights from what you shared with each other in your breakout groups. And, uh, you know, if there are places where things resonate or you feel they connect with you, that somebody else has said, feel free to, you know, open your mic and, and, and share that as well. So if you would, I want to remind us to, you know, try to stick around one minute so we can get as many voices in this equation as possible. The intention is for, um, you know, our partners at CPS to hear, to listen, to actually hear what you have to say. So the floor is now for you and Hal, if you would, uh, let us know the first person.
Yes, we have Sheri, uh, who's been very patient, uh, but she was eager to speak last time. So excited to hear from her now.
Thank you, Hal. So we're discovering that we have a theme going on from the last question to this question. And the first one um, about our experience was the humanity that was extended to us individually by people that we were, either worked with or are teachers. Um, where if we had a death in the family, that expectations were adjusted for us, deadlines were extended, things like that. And so people understood. And then we asked, why does it have to be death? Why aren't we seeing other stressors? Why aren't we giving, extending grace or humanity for other things that affect our wellbeing? Which then leads into, um, these, um, the most current question. Hang on a second. Can you lower that please? Um, our most current question, um, being that these, um, the levels and the ratings establish a reputation for our schools that affect recruiting teachers, affect attracting parents. And because one school gets an X and one school gets a Y, it doesn't tell the story. It doesn't explain the humanity behind those ratings. And because of that, it makes it difficult for a school without the quality of teaching and without the, the attracting that type of parent to make that step to a higher, um, a higher level. So I think, I hope I reflected our group's feedback.
Beautiful. Thank you. Great points.
Next we have Consuelo Martinez.
Si buenas tardes. Yo hablo español nada más y voy a dar el punto de vista del grupo que me correspondió hace un momento. Las mamás hablaron y las mamás dijeron que la confianza que vamos a tener más los padres hacia CPS es cuando seamos escuchados y nos den cuenta sobre cuáles son los presupuestos para nuestras escuelas. También pensaron y quieren saber cómo va a ser CPS para que nuestros estudiantes sean altamente competitivos a la hora de seleccionar no solo una high school, sino una universidad. También las mamás dijeron que una de ellas dijo, yo tengo dos hijos, uno en el norte y uno en el sur. Y la diferencia de edificios es muy vista. En el sur, las, los pisos se están abriendo, los pisos están, las, las, los zetas se están moviendo de un lado al otro. Y en el norte, la escuela está perfecta. Ahí no hay equidad. También las mamás dijeron que las formas de los exámenes que les dan a los niños para entrar a una high school, hay tres mil niños que quieren entrar a una escuela selectiva y toman los puntajes de estos niños más altos y los de nosotros van quedando abajo. No hay otra escuela selectiva para ellos. Tienen que abrir más competitividad en las escuelas. Más aprendizaje para que estos niños puedan estar entrando a escuelas selectivas, a escuelas en donde tengan su aprendizaje y el día de mañana que van a universidad, no deserten del primer año. Que sigan estudiando, que se graduen de esta universidad. Eso entre otras cosas hablamos nosotros las madres que tenemos un hijo en CPS. Además de que queremos saber quién es el responsable de tomar de una escuela o del sistema que una escuela no suba de nivel. Es la mayor? Son los directores? Son los maestros? O somos nosotros los padres? Eso es lo que vamos a ganar confianza con CPS si tenemos respuestas a estas preguntas. Gracias. Eso es todo.
Gracias.
We have, uh, Bessie Vanderkook.
Thank you. And for the, the last speaker, gracias por tus pensamientos. Muy buenos. Um, anyway, um, yeah, I, I was in my breakout group with some CPS people and then, um, another student, I mean, another, um, mom and also, um, a former AP. From the far south side, I'm from Rogers Park and I couldn't agree more with, um, I, I agree also with the, the in between with the Spanish speaker too, but the, the point I'm making is more to the first point, um, with the rating system. Um, in, in our opinion, um, it's punitive. Um, it's not there to uplift, um, schools that are struggling. Um, it's competitive. It seems to be based on marketing, um, how you market schools. Um, we have a range of schools in Rogers Park that go from one plus to three. And it's absolutely true. Once you've hit three and, and you're not only hitting three, you even get colors to go with it, right? You get beautiful vibrant green if you're a one and one plus and you get this sort of icky bloody red if you're a three. So just as soon as you open up your phone or something, you know, that has to be a bad school. There has to be a way, I would, I would certainly love it if, if at least the numbers were eliminated. It just, it's such a marker. It's like having, you know, like a scarlet letter on you or something. Um, you know, and it, and it, it follows you forever. Kilmer was level three about six or seven years ago, and I still run into people who say, I would not send my kid to Kilmer. It's level three. You know, people don't check again. They just remember from the past. Um, it's, it's, it's something that the, I really like also what was said about it being holistic of a way of presenting schools. You know, not everything that counts has to be counted. And, I'm sorry. And, and to have things on the rating, maybe not a rating, but something to show a more holistic view of the school. If you have gardens, if you've got special programs, if you've got parents coming in and doing things of whatever it is, um, if you've got a, 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 a more diverse, um, um, faculty than other schools. There's so many ways of showing the value to schools that doesn't have to do with the rating system that we now have. Um, and I would really encourage CPS and the committee that's working on this um, to, to seriously look at why the system was created, what it does and what it doesn't do. And just one quick other thing, um, I looked around the country too, at other rating systems. Um, from New York to Los Angeles to San Francisco, I haven't found anybody that uses numbers. Um, and, um, I would really encourage as, at least as a, just as a beginning for CPS to get away from that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Jocelyn Sanders.
Hello and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jocelyn Sanders Cohen's and my kids go to Hella M. Heffron Elementary School. I graduated, my father graduated and certain daughters from Heffron and my family has attended Heffron for multiple generations. In addition to being a parent and representing my children, I'm also a member of the Heffron LSC. So I represent the school and the community. As a LSC member, I've heard there's many challenges with SQRP. I've also experienced some challenges with my own children. My son is a diverse learner. In February 2020, my son was diagnosed with ADHD and soon afterwards, the pandemic struck. There were follow-ups and the curriculum was there, but if I hadn't gotten the diagnosis, my son would have fell even further behind in his curriculum. I had the help and support from the school and staff to help with his special needs. And this is why I believe accountability is important. Um, I think the new policy has to include metrics for diverse learners. That it needs to be a requirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if folks want to, uh, just. If folks want to, there's no one else that still is waiting with their hand raised. If anyone wants to, I mean, we have the chat, we have the idea boards, we have other opportunities, emailing SQRP at CPS.edu, but if we do have about, about fifteen minutes longer to have just an open microphone and folks would like to raise their hand. I see we've got Leslie Perkins.
Sure. Thank you for hosting this meeting today. So in my breakout group, we, we talked about how the SQRP kind of pits these schools against each other, and it gets them really competing. And then another point of discussion was kind of the disproportionate impact of SQRP and how it leads to hoarding of resources in more affluent and more white communities. And we kind of see overcrowding. And I think it's worth pointing out that this is kind of intertwined then with the student-based budgeting model, right? So as we get more students competing to go to these schools that are one or one plus, we see that they get more funding as a result. I kind of want to echo Bessie. And, you know, I, for full transparency, I'm Chief of Staff, Taller Woman Maria Haddon, and we met with our LSCs prior to this meeting. And one of the main things that we heard from feedback from our LSC members was that really to start to reform this and create, you know, an accountable and transparent process, we need to eliminate the numbering system and the scores. And as Bessie already mentioned, this is done in other major municipalities, school districts. So I think it's really worthwhile for CPS to explore that.
Thank you. You know, and, and what's, what got lifted up for me from what Leslie was just saying is that, you know, we, we've, we sort of represent a much broader community in our, you know, in this moment where we can sort of lift up things on behalf of our community, because there are people who aren't in the room who, who we want to begin to bring into this space so they can be heard. But in their absence today, I want to make sure that we make this time available for you all to, to, you know, share as much as possible on this issue of, you know, trust too. You know, how do you, how do you, how do we get back or how do we rebuild trust after, you know, harm has been done? I mean, that's, that's a real question. And that's the second part of that question that I'd like to, you know, invite you all to speak to if you, if you would.
We have Ms. Flores.
Mi nombre es María Flores y voy a hablar en español porque es mi lengua nativa y creo que tenemos también ese derecho. Yo he sido parte del concilio escolar local de mi vecindario, de mi escuela, de mis hijos durante diecisiete, este es el dieciocho año, y he tenido todas las posiciones. Ahora soy la presidenta del concilio y esto me ha permitido hacer parte de las decisiones y de la SQRP por muchas veces. Pero yo pienso que una manera que los, que las IPS tienen que saber es que necesitamos fondos para nuestros niños en las escuelas para crear programas para ellos y sobre todo mantener un ambiente seguro, porque aquí en nuestros barrios del sur siempre hay mucha violencia y esto impacta a nuestros estudiantes. Y creo que debe de haber programas para ellos como arte, como música, como arte de todas las clases, pintura, baile, literatura. Todo esto puede ayudar a nuestros niños a sobresalir y a llegar a, a un nivel más alto en la escuela. Y creo que una manera de volver la confianza a nuestros padres es mantener un ambiente seguro fuera y dentro de la escuela con más policías, porque sabemos que durante el verano es más difícil para nuestros estudiantes. Pero creo que si se crean este tipo de programas, es en beneficio de los niños y también de la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
We have Robert Bellin.
Yeah. I feel like I'm sort of preaching to the choir here, but I just want to second what Bessie was saying that like, you know, there is this. And I'm sort of imagining, you know, how my mom, you know, plays into the stereotypical white mom, who would probably be one of those people that would say, oh, I would never send my child to a level two or whatever school. And it's just like, if we could finally just get rid of these numbers, then maybe it will be even more clear to see how this is just systemic racism and like, that number just means like, I would never send my kids to like, a black school or a diverse school or Hispanic school. So it's just like, you know, if we can actually like be honest with ourselves and recognize that that's what's going on, then maybe it will be a little bit easier to get the change that we need in this district.
Thank you, Robert.
We have, I guess the last time I see that Michael's iPhone. Michael?
Michael Bronson, is that? Do I have?
Yes, this is you. Yes.
Oh, how you doing? How do we rebuild trust? Let me start by saying that the first thing I think CPS should do is actually listen to what people are saying. Because since I've been on this, brought this meeting here, a few people have spoken, three or four, four or five. No one has had anything positive to say about the SQRP program. And I think that should be taken into account. They don't like the numbering system. They say that it's not done in other districts across the nation. And so, you know, listen, listen and act accordingly. That's the first thing that, that CPS can do to rebuild trust. The second thing CPS can do to rebuild trust is reempower the local school councils. There are a number of local school councils that have lost their powers because of the probation system. They've lost their powers for a number of years now. They no longer have the ability to evaluate or select principals. They no longer have the ability to have any say-so about the budget. You know, all of the statutory powers that were given to them by the, by the state law have been lost because of this, you know, evaluation process. So reempower the local school councils. And then, you know, if a school is in trouble, come up with a viable exit plan to get them out of trouble because, so that they don't stay in the hole for like six, seven, eight years, like a number of schools have. So that's, I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks, Evan.
We have Stephen Rosado.
Hello, Stephen Rosado. I'm a member of the Scher's High School, LSC, community rep for the LSC at Scher's High School. I just want to speak to, you know, at some points that have already been reaffirmed, that have already been made, I've heard in a few spaces, but just affirm some of these points around one, you know, and Michael, you really said it well. I think that the consensus even before these meetings are a large population that I've heard from is that, you know, what is the point of this LS, or excuse me, the LSC, the SQRP in relation to, we, we have, we have spoken out, so many folks have spoken out about the harm that that SQRP perpetuates. Let's just be real and call it what it is. SQRP perpetuate harm. SQRP are the definition of what we talk about when we say systemic violence, institutional violence. It's not an abstract concept. We can clearly define SQRP and, and point to it as an indicator and as a way, as a tool for, for systemic and institutional violence and for disinvestment. I think that schools, neighborhood schools like Scher's in particular, but Scher's is not the only one, are disadvantaged by SQRP for many reasons that folks have already named, so I don't need to, to, to continue to dive into that. But there's many reasons that neighborhood schools, schools that serve students who are, who are lower socioeconomic status, who don't have the same access to economic resources as their peers, are, are disenfranchised and disinvested in as a result of the systemic violence that is the tool of the SQRP. I think SQRP is problematic because it dehumanizes our students, it dehumanizes our communities, it dehumanizes our schools when we are reducing their value to a number into a data point. And as the young student, a few speakers ago, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, was, was speaking about, right, this informs how parents see the schools. This also though informs, you know, when we want to talk about having a truthful conversation and being accountable, this informs how communities see each other. What is the message that you are sending to a community when you're telling them that the school or multiple schools that are situated in their communities have this rating on this scale that, that's been developed, right? And that the scale is telling them that you're a level three, you're, you're failing, all right? But the school one neighborhood over, up the block, right, is getting a higher rating in comparison. So I think this, these dehumanize and they actually have an effect on community psychology and on the well-being of communities. They perpetuate, you know, all types of segregation. We could talk, there's numerous data factors already and numerous data points that point out to this segregation that gets perpetuated by SQRP. And I, and I also think that as a tool, they become a conduit for schools who are level one, level one plus to say, well, our SQRP says we're a one or a one plus, we do not then need to make any adjustments. I just had a conversation yesterday with another LSC member who is a friend of mine at LSC at a selective enrollment, and they are trying to do some work around racial equity and practices around equity and policy in their school. And the administration's response is essentially, why are you doing this? We're already a one plus, right? So then it becomes a crutch for the administration to say, we actually have everything, right? We're doing things, right? We're doing things well in our school because we're a one plus and we don't need to consider where your input. So I think the SQRP as a framework has, is highly problematic. And I also think just in general, I know there's going to be additional meetings, but I also think that, and I looked at the different times for the meetings and, you know, folks like me who have some degree of flexibility are able to make these meetings. But if, when I looked at the meetings, you know, there's only four meetings in the span of a week. I'm not sure how much your engagement you're intending to get in that span. I'm not sure how much parent engagement you're intending to get in that span. I'm not sure how much student engagement, who we should be hearing from and centering in this, you're intending to get in that span, when you're only hosting four meetings. No matter what the purpose of these meetings are and knowing that I'm sure there'll be other meetings, but just for this initial kickoff of a town hall, we are not hearing from voices, I think, in a representative way because it's being condensed into this one-week window.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen. So we have about five minutes. Let's get as many voices in as possible in the next five minutes. Hal?
We've got Iris Smith.
Thank you again. I think in order to build trust, stronger trust and engagement, you need to have real-time action, real-time data. Again, I believe that, you know, listening to everyone who is involved, and that, that's not just the ones who can come to these meetings, but on a daily basis, you know, from their phones and things like that. You guys should have a platform where they can voice what is needed. That will encourage change, action, innovation. You'll hear things from people who, you know, are afraid to speak, speak out via email or, you know, any other way. But I think that when letting others, you know, give their input and creating an action plan, it will definitely build trust and, you know, get things moving to help create change, real change, real-time action, real-time data equals change.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ellen Kennedy. I'm a principal at Richards Career Academy in Back of the Yards. And I, I couldn't find my raise hand function. I think I need to update my Zoom.
No problem.
I appreciate in this space, like, the, the, the recognition of the, the harm that SQRP has on schools. But I think about it particularly as a administrator at a small high school. And so I do appreciate that from a CPS-sponsored meeting that there is that tone and recognition. I think with the rebuilding trust, what I'm struggling with is like, also, we're not past the harm. There's still like harm that happens on an ongoing basis. And so that's where I'm struggling with how we build, we trust, trust, rebuild trust when harm like, we're, we're taught, like, we're bouncing between harm, causing harm and trying to rebuild trust. And I can cite two examples. One, the grading policy that we have during a pandemic, it's causing harm. Two, I will name, last Friday, communication went out publicly that the opt-in process for quarter four was open and available effective Monday for families, particularly around high schools, and no high school administrator received any communication about that in advance. And that was such a missed opportunity, I think, for us to, as administrators, to help rally behind what's happening, understanding there's a lot of moving parts. It's just, it, it was, that was tough for us administrators to see this news go out publicly. And we had no courtesy communication, nothing that was planned in advance with us. And so it's, it's like harm in, in a lot of different ways is, is very present and still occurring. And so, so that's why I struggle with how we're rebuilding trust around that. But I do appreciate the effort to, to try to figure that out. So thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more.
Amy Ellison.
Okay. Thank you. I'm a member of the LSC at my kid's elementary school, and I'm really aware and looking at the SQRP and looking at all of the other ratings that the LSCs are supposed to be considering that evaluation is and SQRP are completely intertwined and that where there is harm in one rating, there are harm, there's harm being perpetuated in some of these other ratings. So that principals who are given a great deal of weight in how to administer the school, that is, they're, they're sort of seen as the key by CPS to change in their schools, they are evaluated, fifty percent of their evaluation are test scores. And then that leaves less leeway for the LSC, for parents, for students, for teachers to be able to emphasize the areas of the school that they feel need growth or the, the areas of the school that they feel are great and want to grow because these test scores are so important to how principals are evaluated. And so it feels like it's not just the SQRP that we should be talking about, but also how principals are evaluated all the way down to how teachers are evaluated, or what it even means to do these kinds of evaluations and whose standards we are using. And I don't need to say much more about that, but I just want to note that these things are intertwined. It's not just about the SQRP, but there's a cascade of evaluation that has an effect on what all of this means for our communities.
Thank you. So thank you all so much. I mean, I, I want to, you know, just express my deep gratitude for your willingness to be honest and, and, and share your truth and to also listen to, to others. You know, I, as I mentioned earlier, the way that this work is effective is, you know, we need to be explicit about owning this process. You know, fully being engaged over the next year to ensure that our voices are heard as this redesign takes place. So thank you so much for allowing me to hold space for you today in this beginning of a, of a long journey. So I appreciate it. And in closing, what I'd like to ask you all to do, if you would, just, you know, put one word that you're feeling right now in this moment in the chat, just as a closing. And I'm going to lift up a couple of those words. And then I'm going to turn this over to Jeff, who will take us into the next part. Some of the words I'm seeing is vulnerable, reflective, hopeful, frustrated, grateful, frustrated, honesty, tension. And all of those words, I invite us to, you know, continue on this journey, knowing that we are doing this work on behalf of our children. So thank you. And Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Monica. Appreciate you. And appreciate everybody for their comments so far. My name's Jeff Broome. I'm Director of School Quality Measurement and Research. Among other things, my department administers the current SQRP and will be in charge of, of reevaluating and redesigning and implementing the new system that we come up based on your feedback. So this has been really, really great to hear where folks are starting this conversation. It's, it's really important. It's it's really important as a foundational piece, I think. As we as we think about this process, it's it's not only good to think about where we're starting, but I think Ellen and Amy both had comments that point to kind of the complexity of this conversation because so so when, since we've started this, I've had Lauren Hill going in my head for the last few weeks. You know, the song Everything is Everything, where like this conversation touches a lot of other other conversations in the district, whether it be student based budgeting, the portfolio strategies, other things that haven't even come up. And so we're going to have to wrestle with that as a community together. So I I appreciate the energy. I appreciate the spirit that that people are coming into this with. Because we do, we do want to get to something better. And and so the question is, how do we, how do we get there? How do we get from where we are now? Which is, as Chief McDade said, is a place where the system, you know, we we do think the system does some good things. And everything that we've heard in the last twenty minutes is is perfectly valid. So how do we get to something better? So the goal of my, my goal of our with our time together is to make sure that everyone leaves with a with a good understanding of of why we're doing this process, what our goals are, how this engagement work is rooted in the district's equity framework and what the timeline is. Because I know we were talking about, I heard other folks talk about, you know, this last couple of weeks, we're in it for the long haul. This is good. This is going to be a big process over the next year and we want to make sure people are rooted in the process to get from where we are now to where we all want to be. And so then after my comments, we're going to have our final breakout session to discuss two things. So hold these two questions in mind as I go through my comments so that you're ready to talk about them in the group. Because we are going to have facilitators who are taking notes. So the questions are, and we've seen some allusions to these already, whose voice might be missing in the stakeholder engagement process that I'm about to describe? And what are the best ways that the district can inform, communicate and keep stakeholders engaged throughout the process? So for the next year, so we're we're doing town halls, we're doing our website, et cetera, we're doing Twitter. But give us ideas for how else you want to be engaged and how your peers want to be engaged, okay? Because we want to make, we want to make the process as effective as we can. So let's start as with why the district launched this process. So we want to ground ourselves in the in the commitment of the district is always going to measure student and school performance. We think that's an exercise in transparency. We think, you know, knowledge is power and we want to empower our stakeholders with information about how students and schools in the district are performing. But we've heard from our stakeholders just in the last twenty minutes, but for the last, you know, couple of years, that SQRP can be improved. So in response to that feedback, we want to partner with you to co-create a new system that better serves school communities and the district. So we've got a few goals with this. First is we're going to collaborate with you and anyone who has a stake in our students' education to help create a new accountability system that promotes equity and excellence in our schools. But, you know, we, the conversation we want to have goes beyond what people traditionally think of when they think of school ratings. So we want by the end of this, we want the new system to do a few things. By the end, we want a system that gives you a more complete picture of school performance and progress. So I heard, you know, there are limitations with how we do it now. What else needs to be in there? We need to hear from you so that the new system can can do that more effectively. We want the new system to better align with how the district supports schools, including how schools are funded and resourced, right? So the district certainly has a responsibility for resourcing schools and supporting them, and we need good information to do that. So what kind of information do we need to make that support more effective? We want to provide new information on school quality, student performance, other data, and to make that data more accessible and understandable to all stakeholders. So how can we make this more accessible to you with, when you ask, how are my students? How are, how is my school doing? How do we make that easier for you? And then finally, and Chief McDade alluded to this, we know that there's a shared responsibility for the success of our schools. So part of the conversation we want to have is how the new accountability system can measure district effectiveness, all right? So that's not just about school accountability. It also needs to be about district accountability and district quality, okay? So as you've heard from Dr. Sweeney, our stakeholder engagement process really does tie directly to the equity framework, which you see on your screen in front of you. And so we're rooting at that, we're rooting it in that, but we also need your feedback on how to do this process effectively. So today, this first round of town halls, we're just listening and we're going to continue to listen throughout the process. But soon we're going to move next into our informed phase. Where we're going to be talking a little bit more with the goal of providing our stakeholders with objective information to make sure we all have a shared baseline understanding of the challenge before us as well as the current state of how the accountability system works. So I heard a lot of really deep knowledge about how about the current SQRP, but we know not all of our stakeholders enter with that same expertise. So we want to make sure everyone gets there so we know we're we're able to have the same conversation. So we've got some ideas about how to provide this information. But again, that's one of the questions that we're going to focus on during our breakout session in a few minutes. That we're then going to move on to our consult phase. This is where we get stakeholder feedback through meetings like this, but also more targeted touch points like focus groups, surveys, some of the priority stakeholders that we're going to engage with during this phase include parents, families, caregivers, including those who have students who are diverse learners, English learners, other priority groups. We want to hear from students. We want to hear from principals and teachers at both elementary and high school levels. We want to hear from folks who are on LSCs, parent advisory councils, community action councils. And frankly, we want to hear from any community member or any stakeholder who's active in their local community and and has a stake in in our education system. And and for all of these groups, so we we are going to do our kind of traditional efforts to reach out to folks, but we need to engage with those that we normally don't hear from just as much as the folks who are engaged. And so if you have any ideas about how to engage those folks, tell us. And 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 then and and please take a stake in this process and and inform them yourself, right? We want, we want as many people engaged in this process as possible. So I hope that's an indication that we're going to work really hard to provide a wide variety of opportunities for all of our stakeholder groups to contribute perspectives during this phase. We also want to make sure this list of stakeholders is the right one. And so remember, that's another question that we're going to discuss in our breakout section. We're then going to move into involve where we're going to take the diverse perspectives from the consult phase and work directly with you and other stakeholders to ensure that your aspirations are directly reflected in possible solutions. So we're going to say, we heard this as a problem or an idea. We're, it's going to be our charge to come up with something that says, this is how we think we might implement it. And then we're going to bring those ideas to you and see what we got right, what we got wrong, how can, how we can make those ideas better. We're then going to move into collaboration phase where we have the advisory group that we've announced and then other small and large group discussions. We're going to continue to sort of work through those solutions. Again, it's all tied back to the feedback we hear from you and then integrate all of that into final decisions to the maximum extent possible. Really want to make sure that to to the extent humanly possible, the final policy is reflective of everything we've heard through over the course of the next year. So this is also, and and we've alluded to this already, through this process, we're going to look at other district policies like budgeting and to test ways how a new accountability system can intersect and support improvements in those policies as well, okay? So so finally, the 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 school, the new, the new policy is ultimately one that's going to be approved and voted on in public by the board. But, you know, our commitment is that when you see that final policy, you're not going to be surprised. And as I said, we want it to be as reflective as possible of what we've heard throughout the process. So the idea is that we hope that people are going to be able to say, this is where I look at the policy and say, this is where I contributed and this is how my perspective and feedback was incorporated. So another commitment is we also are going to be really transparent about this process. Through each phase of the project, we're going to release interim reports synthesizing the perspectives and feedback that we're hearing. That's also accountability for us throughout this process so that you can say, you you caught that, you missed that. I don't see this other thing I heard at all. We're going to take feedback throughout, right? So we're we're going to exercise accountability through transparency throughout this process. So the slide that you see now has the overall timeline. Again, we're working backwards from a goal of voting on the new policy at the April twenty twenty two board meeting. So we've got about a year to come to a something better in partnership with you. So I I want to know, and I I hope you've heard this so far, but if not, I want to echo it. We really are trying to enter this space in the spirit of humility. We we are not asking for trust at this point. We know we need to earn that. But we do ask for some grace because we, and we hope it's reasonable to do that because we know we're going to make some mistakes in this process. And we're really interested in in hearing feedback on on how to do it better. So we're going to grow throughout this process and we're going to really need to hear from you throughout on how to how to make, how to do this work more effectively. So I'm going to, I I hope that was clear. I hope that's helpful information. For the rest of our time, we're going to break out rooms with two questions. So again, the first question is, whose voice is missing in the process as we've outlined so far? We've mentioned parents, caregivers, students, teachers, principals, LLC members, community members, but who else? Help us think outside the box on this. The second question is, how do we do an effective job, the district, of informing, communicating and keeping folks engaged over the course of the next year? So we're going to do webinars, we're going to show up to meetings, we're going to use the website, et cetera. But what other ideas do we need to think about? So we're going to go into our breakout rooms now. As I mentioned, we're going to, each group will have a facilitator who will be taking notes. We're not going to have time to do a debrief after the breakout, but we're going to catalog those notes afterwards. Again, I want to do a final plug. Feedback in the chat is going to be recorded. And then anything you have to say, if you want to do a written statement, avoid, send a a voice message. Please do that via sqrp@cps.edu. That's a Gmail inbox that we're monitoring throughout this process. So I hope that was helpful. Thank you so much. Really love the engagement and feedback so far and looking forward to the breakout rooms. Thank you.
Welcome back. So before we close, we know that your conversations were captured by your breakout room facilitator. But we can have a couple of people share the ideas they discussed in our final breakout. So if somebody wants to share, you can raise your hand.
We've got a, yeah, we've got a Jillian Karu.
Yeah, thank you. So I think in our breakout, what we just kind of talked about was the fact that oftentimes in these rollout plans around stakeholder engagement, we start with listening. And abyss, a big component of being able to give a sound piece of feedback is being educated. And so my worry here is that we have missed out the opportunity to educate our stakeholders because then my voice will be weaponized, right? Because I might be asking for oppressive practices and I don't recognize that they're oppressive, right? So I think that the the first stage in this case was listening and I'm wondering if it was a missed opportunity to actually educate students and families around what the current system is, why it exists, right? So that they can then have an informed opinion. So I just want us to kind of consider the educational aspect of all of this as well.
I see we've got Stephen Rosado.
Hey, Jillian, you were like in my brain because that kind of what we were talking about a little bit as well. I think the only thing, that's a great point. I think the only thing, you know, that I want to add on that is I speak as someone who is a CPS alumni, whose family works in CPS, whose family attends CPS. And like, as I mentioned earlier, is a member of a school council, LLC. And I just feel like CPS in general does a lot of listening because it presents an opportunity to check a box to say that listening is occurring, occurring. And they can do all the work, the district can do all the work that they want to do around identifying who is missing. And I'm sure you could get those voices that you feel are missing and that folks have said are missing. My concern is just still like, where does the actual action come in? And that's where kind of I was leaving off with it in our last chat box, in our last breakout room, I should say, is, you know, we can listen and listen, listen. But I think, you know, the the pushback against SQRP has happened for a long time. I think that the idea that, you know, we can reform a a tool that, as I said earlier, is just inherently violent and inherently racist and inherently disenfranchising, causes disparities is not where we should be starting. We shouldn't be starting that SQRP is okay, just needs some tweaks around the edges. I think we should be starting at the idea of what can we create that is not SQRP? You know, and what can we reimagine in how we are constructing the assessment of schools? So just want to leave on that point. And I think that that is, you know, front and center with Jillian, with what Jillian is sharing about the current need for education around what the rating system currently encompasses and how it's used. Because I don't think that that is clear and understandable for the vast majority of folks. Especially, you know, when you look at everything that's online about it on the website, you know, it requires a deeper synthesis of understanding to actually truly engage with it.
Thank you, Stephen. I think we've got just time for for two more folks. We've got two more hands raised. We have Michael and Iris Smith. Michael, if you want to go first.
Yeah, one of the things that I wanted to address was how to get more information that you're you're looking for. And my suggestion is that the people in the central office that are gathering information should actually go out to the schools and attend some of the local school council meetings and speak to people at those local school council meetings and get their feeling. Now, there was some pushback on that because there are oftentimes when people from central office go out into the field, they're met with hostility. And I can attest to that. I've been to public meetings where there has been a great deal of hostility. That's why you have to kind of like send the right person. And if you're not going to do that, you can do some blind, send some blind surveys out to the schools.
Thank you, Michael. Then Iris, if you want to finish this out before we we transition to final remarks.
Yes, in the last breakout room, we kind of discussed these, you know, meetings are good. You can write it down, you can listen, but how is it being managed? How are we measuring it? And how are we taking action on those specific things that are being said? In addition to stakeholders engagement, engagement with partners and things like that. All of that data, even this meeting today, how is that, how, how is that going to be measured? How how will our thoughts and the things we share be put into place moving forward? So if you don't have, you know, it's easy to miss things when you're writing down things or you don't have things stored properly or properly managed. It's hard for you to execute. So having a platform that will give you all of the information and the data you need and the go to action plan is, I think, you know, it's best. And it makes life easier, not just for you guys, but for the people who are at the ground level, actually working in the schools.
Hi, this is Marietta. And as we conclude this afternoon, we want to thank all of you for joining, joining us with your input to the district and to all of those who are responsible for these towns halls. We want to thank you for hearing our voices. Again, my name is Marietta McDuffie and I am a product of CPS. So are my children and my grandchildren. I am also a retiree from City Colleges of Chicago, where I taught for over fifteen years and noticed that some of the adults were coming to the college with limited reading and math skills. It looks like the redesigning of the SQRP performance system is only a natural process in the assessment cycle. And it should be a process that authentically engages parents. As some of you have said, you know, we want to get all the voices of the stakeholders and all of the voices of the children, even I heard that today, get those voices involved. As parental and community investors, we want to be engaged, not only as advisors, but as co-creators and decision makers. What's most important is the vision that we have for our children's education, which should be the basis for what is measured in this new policy. We would like the policy that to be supportive and not punitive. We need to have an improved mechanism that ensures We need to have an improved mechanism that ensures equitable funding and support to those schools who need it the most. A conversation about accountability is really a conversation about the purpose of schools and the vision we have as parents and stakeholders for our children. We, what we decide to measure is what we believe to be the most important. And I heard some of us saying, you know, let's get rid of these numbers. Let's do something different. So what we will measure will be what's important to us. We will find out what we need to measure and find out what's important for us and measure that. Finally, I would like to say, tell a friend, tell another parent, tell a student, educator or community member about other engagement opportunities that the district will make available. We want to ensure that everyone's voice is included. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a great rest of your day.